Thanks, Brian. Can you call in the order? I pledge allegiance except... This Leonie don't have... Okay, you're good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands as one nation under God, and to the government of America. Thanks, everyone. Could I have Mr. Scott call the roll?
Hearing by the third.
Yep.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Scott here. Mr. Struble?
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Could I have Superintendent support from Dr. Cooper?
Thank you, Madam President. First item I want to share is the BCIU has sponsored the implementation and delivery of the J.J. vaccine to the kind of like educators over the past week and a half. And our district had 220 stat numbers, both professional support contractor service providers not related right the course of that one and a half weeks. So it was a success and close to happening to be able to have the opportunity to be not related. The second item I have is just follow up from community whole and regarding this evening on the agenda as an item for the board to vote on our return to in-person learning and kind of slow walk our students back, having our students still walking back into the in-person instruction environment. So basically intent is your community relations office, Mark, working with the high school municipal principals, send a correspondence coming to our students' families on those who are interested in returning from digital back into that hybrid blended with the intent of having them, those students start with the B group, which would start Monday the 29th, give them three days to be in person with the B group cohort with the return from spring break, all of the A B cohort learning together in person for those who choose to do that. Also during that time, please keep in mind that our DBDL and VDA option will still be offered as an option, learning option, instruction model for our students' families who are still interested in doing so. The last item, or second last item, also just wanted to remind the board that as we come back to the in-person instruction environment, we still need to be cognizant of the perhaps at times need to move pivot to a full virtual model if our infection rates go, then arrange that the Department of Health established for us to have that closed in-person instruction for specified amount of days. So just a reminder of that. And the final item is the two state champions that we just learned that we had over the weekend in swimming, won in swimming, won two gold medals, a gentleman who won a state title in bowling. So go Blazers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Okay, next is procedures of public participation. If you, if, at the two dozen many times for public comment, you can come up to the mic. There's a piece of paper and a pen there for you to leave your name, say your name and address. You have three minutes to say what you got to say. At the beginning of the meeting, there would be a time for you to make comments on agenda items on tonight's agenda. At the end of the meeting, there will be a more generally time period for you to make comments on any issue for the board. So say amen. Are there any presentations by the public on the agenda items? Oh, yes? Yeah, come on up.
My name is Rick Miller. I live in Douglasville. We're at the Tatters here, so I got a couple of things I wanted to ask you about. We all pay property taxes here, so we all have a fair share, is what I wanted to say. And I'm concerned whether the kids here are learning history and you want to read my needs.
Wait.
Is history still being taught?
Yes. Okay. If you have more general comments, if you can hold them until the end of the meeting, because right now we're taking comments on agenda items on the agenda today. So, you know, step about like what the curriculum looks like.
Right, that's very important. Be for my kid, great.
I actually understand that, but it's not that, and I will hear you talk about that. Do you have any other items on what we're going to be talking about today on the agenda?
No, thank you. You bring your things up in all time.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any comments on agenda items tonight? I see none. We have some announcements. We have one agenda edit that's written on the, on the agenda where we're adding a couple days to someone's professional leave. I'm told that we have another agenda item added.
Yes, coming out of the finance meeting, we have a recommendation to forward the proposals for audit services and the RFP is also slightly wanted to retrieve some of the proposals for MALLY or five hundred thousand for audit services. Everybody should have a copy of the results.
And there should be a copy of the back of the room added to the agenda back there. And I'm thinking we should add that to new business under nine A.
You want a copy?
No.
Can we add that one under nine A one? Bucky? Yes?
I didn't read down the whole thing, but are we addressing the facility usage at all? Is there anything on the agenda? I see it on here, but I didn't note it said nothing.
Yeah, that's an informational item for us if there's any facility use that's been approved in the next, for the next month that is new. So we don't have anything on there for that.
Okay, are we going to bring it up or can we bring it up just for like for the football and cheerleading, they're starting their practices?
Is there an item about cheerleading facility use that we are voting on today?
I don't think we're voting on it.
Okay, so then can you hold, because just to be consistent, would you be okay with voting?
I didn't know it just because it was an agenda item. Okay.
I swear it will still be here.
Thank you.
Okay. So then we had that one added, right? Added to nine A one, okay. Wanted to announce that we did have an executive session after the budget workshop on Thursday, May 11th, 2021, where we discussed negotiations. And we will have an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss negotiations of personnel. Okay, moving on to consent items, three A one through nineteen. Do I have a motion for all of that? Excellent, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. I, you know, I'm sure Mr. Schor's will be happy to know that I didn't find any errors in the scheduled course guide. So there's only one added, of course, so. And is there anything anybody else wants to talk about, about any of the stuff that's in here? It's a lot, you know, we've got Laser Academy, I know we talked about it last meeting. Do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Number eight, what's the difference between the old program and the new one that we're replacing it with? Is there a cost difference?
I am looking around for Mr. Math, and I do not see any. Is anybody else prepared to take that question? Number eight, the frontline education.
The cost difference would just be, it's a little less over the term agreement, but there is an implementation fee that we would have to incur a little bit.
The implementation fee is $2,000?
Pardon? That was an increased cost of $2,000 a year, all integrated with my learning on board and for all employees.
It's an implementation figure.
Right. That was the difference that I talked about.
Are we getting anything extra for the $2,000?
Yeah, a lot of integration. Sweet integration. So again, cost difference, virtually the same as the settlement base.
Thank you.
Any other questions about stuff we're putting under consent when we vote?
Just a moment. We're setting the graduation date formally.
Yeah, we're setting the graduation date formally for June 4th. And, you know, everyone willing to pretty don't ask. You know, we will be there in person.
So what would that look like as a final?
Correct.
Yeah, it's still in the planning, you know, with the governor's latest guidance, increase in the outdoor venue percentage. And between now and June 4th, that could change again. So, you know, we'll continue closely monitored at to see what we can do in some type of in-person environment for our students' families.
Current guidelines is seventy-five percent for outdoor?
Outdoor, I don't think, fifty or seventy-five, you know, that's having right in front of me, taking a look at it.
It's fifty. Or at least in my business, it's fifty.
Fifty percent.
Indoors or outdoors?
Outdoors.
I think indoors twenty-five still.
And, you know, that's a movable, you know, situation that's still six.
Six or nine?
Is it aware?
Sorry.
All right. No, it's nine. Nine ten. All right, so no other questions, Bucky? Oh, go ahead.
One more question with the public safety plan. Is that including the new recommendations that the governor has issued?
Yes.
Okay, just my question.
Yeah, we, yeah.
They updated that?
Yep, we updated that. Correct. Yeah, I thought so, okay. Um, Bucky?
All right, Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
All are yeses.
Okay, moving on to personnel consent for A one. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Ms. Bell, Ms. Albright? Any comments, questions, concerns? Have a vote?
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
My goodness.
Okay, five is finance added consent, five A one through four. Do I have a motion for that? Mr. Struble, can I get a second?
Second.
I don't know.
Not believe it was Mrs. Thompson.
It was not.
Let's go with Mrs. Olson. All right, any, any comments, questions, concerns under finance added consent? Okay, I'll tell you to vote. Yep.
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
My goodness.
Just want to point out that the first item there is a painting that was used to be donated by Miss Cynthia Painter that was of the Old Roosevelt High School. For any of us old timers there, I think they closed that building with students in nineteen eighty-eight. And we do appreciate that donation. We have some drawings of that building, but this will be a nice addition to our products. So under personnel added consent, we have, if you include the added agenda item, it's six A one through two, including one, one, three. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, can I get, oh, I have to the motion part. Can I get a motion for those?
I just figured out Mr. Struble was the first.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Thompson?
Who's second?
Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions, concerns on those? I apologize for doing it out of order.
Okay, Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
My goodness.
Okay, moving on to programs added consent, seven A one through three. Do I have a motion for those? Okay, Mr. Struble, I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. will first. Just to note that a prom date and a rain date has been added. The fleshed out what that's going to look like is not complete yet, but there will be a prom date if we all vote on, if we all vote to do that. The other two are pro forma MOUs with the lease to cover the building. So anybody have any questions or comments about those three items under programs?
Did you hand the release of coverage?
No. Now, the memorandum have to do with many type of walkthroughs, you know, chain of demand business events. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to old business, eight A one and two. Do I have a motion?
Question.
Motion.
A second.
Okay. Any comments, concerns about the meeting minutes from last meeting? Hearing none, can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, new business is the added item under nine A one. It'll be motion to approve MALLY. MALLY LLP as our audit services provider for five years, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six. Am I correct? I sneak, it's not written down, so I have to say what we're going to call it. And, okay, so that's what that, if I could get a motion, then we can discuss, because I know it's new. Mr. Struble, can I get a second?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Olson, I'd like to cross the path and settle to finalization of the contract by municipal administration, so.
Yes. Yes.
I suppose.
So, Mr. Struble, is that a topic?
Yes.
Mr. Holm?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for keeping me honest. So we put that out for bid. The facilities committee heard what the free business name in work, there's probably in the back of the back of the room, and the warrant all has it, all of us are going to take it from there.
Yeah, there were free and submitted and all fairly close pricing. The selected vendors actually, the middle pricing, the ten thousand dollar floor, the side of the period, and the recommendations from the administration.
Anybody have any questions about the, the bid that the administration is recommending we take for MALLY? They are not the least expensive, they're the middle, is that correct?
Sure.
But, but they are in the area, the other one's from Delaware.
Right.
The most inexpensive one is from Delaware. I mean, after calling references, Mrs. Smith said in the facilities meeting, after calling references, that was her recommendation was to go with that one. Any questions or concerns? If anybody is wondering, our previous auditor did not bid on the package. So who have no other questions, want to vote? Mr.?
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
My goodness.
Great, presentations from the public for non-agenda items. Agenda number two that we're interested? Sorry.
It's all right, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, the meetings are recorded and if you don't come up to the mic, they're not going to kick you off, and so I apologize.
Right, no, that's a fine problem. A few things I want to talk about was the history and what kind of history or history was this, someone seventeen seventy-six program, or it's always something else. Also, is Common Core handy or is that still being permitted?
Can you ask that question again? Can you ask that one again?
Common Core?
Oh, okay.
Is that still in operation or is that suspended?
Okay.
Okay. And also, I'd like to restore library back in the schools. That's God's word, and I think your kids need to be able to read that a little bit. Not that they all have to do it in unison, but if everybody reads and goes around the room and so on and so forth for a couple minutes, I think that would be good. And I'm sure the teachers want to understand the things for all the children that are in school that's happening now. And I think we're all aware of what's going on right now. A lot of negative things happen. And there's some serious things coming. So I want you all to understand that. And there is a saying, when good people stand up, positive things happen. When people don't stand up, negative things happen. And one more thing, I wondered if possible, if you all could have meetings earlier. For folks that have to work, I'm retired, but I could never make a meeting before, because I'd have to get up one thirty in the morning and get paid, go to work. I'm a little choked up. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time.
Well, we can answer it and get back.
Yes.
Later in time.
Okay.
Maybe something, we can research the history of the Common Core. I'll press an answer. If he leaves his information, we can get back to him.
So normally we don't do question and answer unless it's like something that I immediately have the answer for. We are going to ask you, meetings aren't going to go on much longer than this, so if you could give me your contact info, I'm going to have somebody get back to you with the answers they need. And that will be part of the record, so just.
I'm with it.
Yeah, excellent. So I know, you know, we're not going to be much longer, but I'll get that for you later.
Okay. My question was just, are we going to be allowing extra colored sports from outside organizations back into the schools?
That sounds like a facilities question.
I can answer that for you. Currently, we do allow certain outside organizations in our elementary school gymnasiums. For example, I know for a fact that every AC basketball is using that facility. So to answer that and the nod if our secondary building, our middle school, high school, to protect elementary school's primary, that was the reason. So yes, now that uniforms are over, it's hard with some restrictions, all these public restrictions to allow outside organizations, provided they're category one, that's basically non-for-profit types of groups and local community groups to use it. We're not going to allow groups that rent our facilities for tournaments, things like that to use. That's not my recommendation, I don't think.
And that being said, are they going to follow the same guidelines as the school district, or are you going to set forth those COVID restrictions that you have here for school, the same as the outside group?
They're going to need to follow, they're going to need to follow the governor's and department of health's recommendations and the parts of that.
Okay.
Yeah, but just, you know, to add some color to that, we had to decide what we're going to do. If we, the way that our requirements are for the high school, for all the buildings actually, if we had an outside group come in to do an event at seven o'clock at night, and then there was going to be like a basketball game at five o'clock the next day, if someone there at that other outside event, you know, was COVID positive, we might have to cancel our basketball, you know, and that's why we did it the way we did. And I know it wasn't ideal, but, you know.
No, this is just for, I mean, I'm with laser magic football over there, so we're just trying to kind of see where we go with the spring sports and obviously all the kids are here, you know, participate in this, so we just want to make sure that.
In a normal year, would you have contacted facilities manager to set something up?
Oh, we probably, the last, I guess the last thing that we got was that they weren't allowing anyone in, so we didn't know if that was going to end for, if it was just for winter or if it was going to continue on.
Yeah, and especially if we're going to try to figure out which building is best place for you, and, you know, you don't want to reach out to the principal of one building that, you probably want essentially to make that request, just reach out to Mr. Biggs.
Yeah, we do do that, but we just.
You know, I mean, but I'm. You know, I mean, but I would, if you're looking to do it soon, you know, talk to him now and see if we can work somehow.
It's a question.
It's for the middle school, actually, I think that's where we have our gymnasium.
Winter sports are, have just ended, you know, the last couple weeks, so that request to provide everything, it's all the typical requirements that we usually have met.
Okay.
There are no other sports that you suggest? Volleyball or?
Volleyball uses the high school.
Okay. No reach out, definitely.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Shane Papel, 838.
Write your name down, sorry.
I was gonna do that one, I was.
I got that one.
I'm here on behalf of my daughter has some questions. She's at dance class right now.
Okay.
So I'm the lucky person who gets asked. The questions is concerning prom. So they're all working on this options of having a prom. And, you know, wanted, they wanted to keep in order to have it safe, the junior, I just think they're separate, but the, the school districts going on the way of remember one the other, which is fine, but there's not an option for the kids to dance. So I don't, she wanted me to bring it up to the school board, you know.
You're the first person to bring it up in a meeting, but you're not the first person I've heard this from, and so, yeah, I, I have, I'm gonna be reaching out to Mr. Schor's to talk about.
Okay, yeah, and that's what.
You know, again, it's not, it's not my, the contours of the event is not my decision, but, you know, I at least want to know what the rationale is or what it will be.
Would that be a board decision?
Whether or not.
To permit a regular prom or a limited prom? I mean, no, no, the board, doesn't the school board make that type of decision? I know, I mean, usually you go by a recommendation.
Right. Totally, so I have not heard what the final discussion is of what, what the, what the broad outline is. I've always seen the date and the rain date. And it's gonna be outside, that's like all I've seen.
And I did explain to her, it's kind of early, to, you know, the school have more information down grade.
Right.
But she wanted me to make.
Yeah, and again, it's not the first time I've heard it, so it will be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, any, anything else?
That, that's it.
The one this is from, great, okay.
Thank you.
64. All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, can I get a vote, should I do the juror? Can I get a second? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.